Ladies and gentlemen, this is the 25th of February, meeting of the Haffield Board of Selectment. Among the topics we're going to be addressing today are the fiscal year 13 financial audit. We'll also be talking about the operating budget, discussing some of the issues that have developed, and trying to get a way ahead, at least initial way ahead on them. We review the town administrator's budget for fiscal year 15. Spend some time on the draft text of the warrant articles for town meeting. Also have some updates on a variety of initiatives, the Smith Academy Park here in Town Center. The upcoming meeting with Representative Kokot on the transportation bond bill. Subtext to that is potential funding for our Route 91 crossing for our water transmission line. Also talk about the center school study, an energy grant submission that's due a couple of weeks ahead here. Move plan for the fire and police to their new spaces, and more. Any announcements? As mentioned the last time, I won't repeat them all, we have a number of positions on various boards and committees that are vacant or coming up for reappointment, and please, if you're interested, appreciate you making your interests known. No one here for a community forum. Begin with me, the minutes. Is there a motion to approve Board of Select of minutes of 28 January? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve Board of Select of minutes of 11 February? Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? First item, the Smith Academy Park, you recall that we got CPA funding. Open Space Committee took this on as an initiative, and going out for contract design of a park on the site of the former Smith Academy in the area adjacent to the town hall. They've come in here with a proposal, are they coming today?
No, no, they're not. The letter here, the committee is recommending that the town engage Martha Lyon as a landscape architect on this project.
Is there a motion to approve the Open Space Committee's recommendation to engage Martha Lyon Landscape Architect LLC for the design services for the Smith Academy Park?
It's a move.
Second. Any other discussion?
I guess the only thing in this letter is, what is the cost? The actual cost going to be?
At $9,500.
$9,500?
Yeah.
And how much?
That's CPA money.
Right. I mean, it's covered though, as far as we know?
Yes, yes.
It was appropriated last town meeting?
Yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Transportation bond bill?
Yeah, we have--
Okay, we have a scheduled meeting with Representative Kokot, 1:00 at his request, on this Friday. Listen to him, one of the things we need to talk about will be the crossing of Route-- underneath Route 91, the jacking and the financing of that project for our water transmission line. And Mike Oll from Comprehensive Environmental will be here with some background information, but--
Yeah.
Where are we? Do we have a package that we're going to use with?
In an email from Representative Kokot, he said, you know, "Let's talk about strategy." So I contacted his office, and I talked to one of his aides yesterday, who was under the impression that we were the ones who called the meeting. So I said, "Well, no, you know, it was on the representative's advice." And so, you know, my question to the aide was, you know, "What exactly is that he's looking to get out of this? What do we need to bring?" But I haven't heard back.
Okay. How about getting from Mike, ahead of the meeting on Friday, like today or tomorrow? Kind of the--
Yeah, I mean, I think--
A small package, I don't care, PowerPoint or whatever, and just in case he has a flat tire on the way in here. So we can review the project with him and give him the specifics of the immediate issue in the context of the larger project, and see what he needs from here. He's the one that requested the thing, and he was asking about strategy. I kept asking Paul, well, how he works this through the legislature.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, he pushed the amendment to the transportation bond to include the $400,000 for the crossing, and--
Which has not passed.
Has not passed, as of today. But I think that the main point to bring to his attention is the bridge, the condition of that bridge, and why we were denied access. And that is obviously under Mass DOT's jurisdiction, so that's what's driving the cost. And, I mean, I think that's a legitimate argument, that that bridge was built back to Cross 91 with all the utility base to carry whatever had to come across there. And the condition of that bridge will not support the water main, which is costing the town the $400,000, which I think Representative Kokot is aware of, but needs to be reminded again that it's not anything to do with the town, that it's a Mass DOT issue.
Okay, well--
And we do have the bridge report attached with it, so.
All right, would you please round up the materials?
I'll have a conversation with Mike today.
Just in case Mike doesn't make it in for some unforeseen reason. And we can meet in your office? We're going to meet in your office?
Oh, I thought we'd meet in here.
All right, okay. All right, that's it for--
That's it.
All right. Corrective action on the audit. Where are the usual suspects?
Yeah, we're only going to find them.
Board of Select will take a two-minute break here. The next topic we're going to take up is the audit for fiscal year 13. Recently, Roselli Clark and Associates completed an audit of our financial statements for fiscal year 13. While audits are not required by Mass Law, they're certainly a good management practice. And the purpose of this discussion today is to kind of define our way ahead on the issues that were identified in the report. And what I'm, the outcome we're looking for is, one, we understand what the root cause of some of the problems are, understand how we're going to address them, and who's going to do what by when. Before we start, just let me say, no smoking gun. But there were a number of steps that we need to do or take on to strengthen our financial management across town government. Among them, improving timeliness of actions, like periodic reconciliations, cash, accounts receivable, schools, documenting policies and practices, improving our system of controls, changing some of our accounting practices. And the audit even had some suggestions on simplifying some of the work that we do. Just like to plow through this page by page. Did you bring a copy of your--
I know by heart.
That's scary.
He's good. Is it okay, could we send it?
We have with us the two experts, Mike Lyons, our town accountant, and Greg Winters, our town treasurer. On page three, it talks about other post-employment benefits plans for other than pension plans, OPEB. And I think we're all agree, we're going to have an article for the warrant that sets up the account, but we're not going to put any money in it this year. We'll come back. That's what I understood your recommendation was. There's another recommendation here about de minimis property tax assessments, exempting property up to $10,000 from taxation. Proposal there to put a warrant, put an article on town meeting warrant to do that. Another part of simplifying work for little return. Well, you're going to take care of the first two here?
Mm-hmm.
All right. The data security audit. There's a recommendation there, it's an issue across many communities, and protecting data that needs to be secured, putting controls on personal information, personal financial information. Greg had one view about not doing that at this time. Any other? Mike, did you have any view on whether we undertake that at this particular time or not?
I don't think it's warranted at this time, no. I mean, I did a calculation, it says several hundred thousand dollars. I don't know if that means countrywide, I think I mentioned before. You know, and I thought it was a serious problem, the state would have informed us to do something or asked us. This is the first I heard of this, was in this report. I don't know how the breaches take place. They go, they get into our computer system and get information?
Could be out of your office if it's insecure.
Well, if it's not locked, you'd be?
Town Treasurer had to run back and lock his office just now, he's got information in there.
I do anyway.
I know that.
Yeah, I guess he's more or less talking about what happens with the credit card stored and things like that, how they get into those systems, and they, you know, get the credit card information. You know, I mean, in our computer system, you know, we do have, you know, employees', you know, social security numbers, you know, their address and things like that, so, you know, I'm not too sure what safeguards the town has as far as going into our computer system, okay? I know you can get on at home, okay? So I guess that's somewhat just a matter of, you know, getting a person's password. And, you know, I log in at home, you know, to do some work here, and so that's just the password, right? I mean, anybody can do that, you know, through our site. So I, you know, probably that's what he's looking at, okay? But as far as any financial information, you know, we don't have, I don't think we have any credit card information, you know, things like that, it's really just social security numbers. You know, I know my files are locked as far as the employer, employees' files, you know, which is just a simple thing. So I don't know how much of a major problem it is for us right now, you know what I'm saying? I don't, I don't really know.
How about if we just went out with an RFI, essentially, well, I'm trying to get a RUM, and what something like this would cost?
I think first we have to, we should find out--
I'm less confident that all the controls are in place.
Well, I think first of all, we'd have to see--
I think we have--
What information that we have that could be compromised, you know what I'm saying? I mean, we have no credit card information, okay, you know, individuals, okay? I see social security numbers--
Social security numbers, names, social security numbers.
That's important. But, you know, I think first of all, you know, we have to figure out what we have for information that could be compromised. I mean, I don't know what, it was in the town clerk's office that, you know, is any, you know, compromised information or any other departments, okay?
Board of Health.
Board of Health, yeah, a lot of things like that, you know. You know, there's a distinction that has to be made between what is public information and what isn't. I mean, you know, there's certain things that, you know, we have--
Personnel files.
Personnel files, things like that, so. So it's probably jumping the gun to go for an RFP. I mean, how we can go for an RFP if we don't really know what we want, you know what I'm saying? I think, you know, I think maybe, you know, the auditor maybe can explain it to us a little more in detail, what other--
So defer for now, get more information about specifics?
I was saying, I think there's more important things to address before that.
Would a conversation with Peregus, could they give us any insight as to possible--
No, we have not--
No, I know.
We've not addressed it.
I think they may know how people could.
Well, clearly. Did you notice from Target? Did you shop at Target or--
Yes, Target.
Or a number of other firms?
Well--
All right, well, town administrator will--
Big fish.
Touch back with our auditor and see if it gets more specific about the scope we're talking about here. Okay, here's, let's start with the cash reconciliations. This gets to the timeliness issues, page five. Town accountant, town treasurer. What's--
The primary collector.
Well, I know, the accounts receivable--
Okay, separate, okay.
Got one with the school too, but, okay. Let's understand, why is, why is it an issue? For, so we do the right thing to fix it?
I think time is the big issue, okay? We, you know, we have to, and this would be for all the financial departments. I think, I'll give you an example, okay? This afternoon, off my time, I'm going up to the school department to meet with Brenda Campisti, who's the accountant up at the school department. I'm going to reconcile the student activity funds, okay? Brenda's taking time from her busy schedule to do that, and I normally don't work on Tuesday afternoons. But, you know, it's an important area, so we're going to spend, we're going to go two years from 2011, '12, and '13, okay? And we're going to reconcile, because the student activity funds have not been reconciled for three years, okay? So it goes into prior administration as well. She's a very, you know, she gets very concerned about that. So we're going to spend all afternoon, and probably into the evening, reconcile the student activity funds, okay? That's the main reason why reconciliations aren't being done.
So it's not a technical issue, it's just--
It's not a technical issue, no, it's time. It's actually allocating time to spend on that. There's a lot of other duties that, and I'm not saying that it's not important, but there's other duties that, you know, come first. So I think on all our parts, including the collector, school, treasurer, and the accountant, have to allocate some time during the month to do the reconciliations, okay? And the reconciliation part is, everybody in their own department is reconciling. The collector is, I am, the school, is all reconciling their records to the various items that we have. You know, there's backup books that are kept at the school department. She has her own ledgers up there. The tax collector has her own accounting system, and I have my own bank accounts. We all reconcile. It's just taking the reconciliation and reconciling to the town accountant's ledger, which is your--
Yeah, the general ledger.
You know, the one that you should be reconciling. So we have to allocate the time. And I don't know how, you know, how that can be implemented, we just have all have to agree that we're going to spend one day a week to reconcile that. And that's your main problem. It's nothing to do with the knowledge of anybody or anything like that, it's just allocating the time, because it does take time. I mean, it's something you really can't do on your own, because you have to talk to that person to find out where the mistakes are. I'll give you an example, for instance, if, when I went up to the school to look at the school grants, because I knew there were problems in the past, and I should point out that this is not something new, okay? It's been in about five or six years of management letters, okay? And we had a new auditor this year, and he discovered the same thing, okay? So it's definitely a problem. But so I went up to the school department on a Saturday to reconcile the grants, okay? So for instance, there was a payroll entry that was, that was not reported to the right grant. But in order to find what the right one was, we had to go, we had to use Brenda's records, and she had to go look up the warrant, and that's how she was able to find the error, okay? It was a misposting. So as far as, Mike, he wouldn't know where that is without talking to the department head. So that has to be done. So the both of individuals have to get together to that reconciliation. You can't do it on your own, that definitely does not work. So that's my answer to, you know, those findings, and that sort of encompasses everything. If everybody's in agreement, I think we just have to allocate one day a week.
And the--
Have to, one day a month.
One day a week?
One day a month.
And the notion of doing it monthly is so that--
Yeah.
It doesn't get--
Right.
Too distant.
But you're supposed to do it monthly. I mean, you are, that's required. I mean, that's required, you know, you shouldn't, because everything's done on a monthly basis.
Requires accounting practice or--
No, just general practice. I mean, you know, everybody at home, I'm sure reconciles their checking account once a month. So once a month is when you should do it. And it should be, I mean, you should not go, wait for two months, three months, four months, and get to the same problem again. No, I think, no, it should be done once a month.
Okay.
You do it once a month, you've got a lot less data to go through, so.
Okay.
Again, it's just getting the individuals together and spending that time.
Okay, so the answer is that town accountant, town treasurer, town collector, school business manager will commit to--
Setting aside--
Setting aside--
Time each month.
Time each month to complete these in the future.
Yeah, I believe that would solve it, I hope.
We'll come back to that point, though. Accounting practices. On the audit, pages six and seven, lists a variety of accounting processes, transfers between funds, overdrawn account, recording of old article releases, or closed property, et cetera, et cetera. Those all appear to be in your Bailey with Mike?
Yeah, he pointed.
So what's the root cause, and what's the action way ahead?
Well, the first item is a reconciliation, that's part of that problem, not doing the reconciliations in time. Yeah, this is the same as above where he recommends that the, well, accountant and collector get together with the offices, different offices, and reconcile. It's similar to the one up above it. Some of the accounting procedures I use, where I mentioned I--
Quote simplified.
I've been taking shortcuts. It ends up being--
Are those GASB approved or whatever?
Yeah, AICPA or GASB, this or that, yes. I was making entries right to undesignated fund balance, and they shouldn't, shouldn't apparently do that. They end up there, but you should go through other financing sources and then close those out at the end of the year.
Okay, so--
Do that for 2014.
So the answer is you'll--
I'll use other financing sources and uses, yes. Rather than just make entries to the undesignated fund balance.
Those are just do-it things, not--
Yeah, no, it's, it's not systemic or anything, it's me.
Well, again, time.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not the shortcut, but it's going to be more of a demand.
We're going to have to catch up for 2014.
Timeliness related to external reporting, the balance sheet, Schedule A, heard that before, too.
Yeah, yeah. Well, this year-end was, I mentioned to you--
Well, I can understand maybe this year-end is a little different, but-- Future.
I'll say, yeah, I'll say--
Root cause is what?
Pardon?
Root cause is what?
Well, 2013, there were some timing issues. And then there was the accounting issue, the accounting firm was going to do some work, and he didn't. So we just got way behind, and Greg and I were rushing to get stuff for Tony, and this was a rough year.
Okay, so what happens differently for this next year? That we're on track for?
Well, I'll just have to get on stuff if we can, in July and August, not later. Which is what I planned on doing for '13, but it got blown out of the water real bad, as you well know. Not a very good year.
Okay, so you're just going to restructure your work to--
Yeah.
Meet the deadline, the external deadlines?
Yeah.
All right, and you're meeting one on Friday, right? That's the Schedule A. Payroll. Okay, I think there's an issue with DPW in particular, that's getting better?
I think that's taken care of now.
Yeah, I believe they implemented a new timesheet, so I don't know, has it started on Phil?
You're going to, this week they'll be starting this payroll?
You know, it's new, it's just, the major problem is just clarity on, you know, the working overtimes and things like that, so Tony, I believe, he developed a timesheet that should, you know, help out, okay? And as Phil says, that's going to be started this week.
Okay.
So hopefully that'll solve the problems that we had with--
Raise the flag.
Timesheet issues.
How about the elected and salary recommendation about not doing timesheets?
I think as I stated before, I like keeping a timesheet, okay? So I, and I'm not too sure on the clarity of whether it's required or not, okay, for the general laws, but I feel that just to document hours, I don't know if the people realize, but in order to receive any fringe benefits in town or to be in the retirement system, an elected official, as well as an appointed official, has to indicate that they're working 20 hours a week.
So this would be a record for--
And I say it's a record, because if there's any question, and especially when it comes to a lot of part-time, you know, the county retirement always has the right to question if you are working the 20 hours. So I feel, as in my, in my case individually, I'm not going to say for everybody else, I'm still going to keep a timesheet. When I took this position, I was told specifically that I had to keep a timesheet, which I did, okay? This is the first time in my entire life I ever keep a timesheet, because it basically was salivating my other employment. But I, you know, I kind of balked at it at first, but now I'm glad I'm doing it. Because I thought about the retirement, I says, you know, "How am I going to document my hours?" So I think it's a good idea. So I don't know, you know, what recommendations, you know, the board is going to have, but as far as in my, I'm going to be keeping the timesheet anyway, and turning it like I have.
Do you have any comment on it?
Well, I'm keeping mine, but I can't imagine for like Phil or Paul. I don't know, I know they have to put in a number of hours, I believe, into the payroll, right?
Well, with Paul and Phil, I mean, their, you know, their employment requires them to work a full week. So as far as any fringe benefits or county retirement, it's, you know, it's pretty much taken for granted, I mean, because they are full-time employees. And I'm talking more about the ones that, you know, don't work a 37-hour a week, or that are not hired, you know, without, not doing a full week. I mean, you have the Board of Health, you know, I'm not too exactly sure on whether if you're elected to the Board of Health, whether you qualify for fringe benefits or the county retirement. I would say if you work your 20 hours, yes, you are, okay? So there's a lot of, you know, a lot of departments that don't, are not required to work a full day's, a full week's work. So in that instance, I don't know, I guess it's up to the individual, really. As far as, unless the Selectmen decide that they want to mandate it, which--
Well, right now, we have it, right now, so--
Right now, everybody's required to have a timesheet, right?
And my own view is, you also have things like people taking personal days--
Yes, that's right.
Or sick leave--
That's true, yes.
Or vacation.
That's another good point, that should be documented.
So they're somehow to document--
So I say, why change it? I guess that's the bottom line. I mean, that's what I would say. It doesn't take that long to fill out a timesheet.
I think in order for a part-timer to be in the retirement system, they have to be, have a 20-hour-a-week schedule.
Right, so somehow you have to prove that, and you document that.
Yeah. For someone who's an hourly-type person, but they should be scheduled for at least 20 hours--
Well, they're going to, they're going to keep a timesheet anyway, the hourly people.
Yeah.
Because they have to, because that's how they get paid. So, you know, how many individuals are we, you know, talking about here, okay, that are not--
Two.
Well, you know, I think all the department heads, or most of the department heads.
Police, fire--
So it's whatever, I guess it's in your, you know, park.
Jan, you--
I don't see anything wrong with keeping a timesheet, like--
What's that?
I don't see anything wrong with keeping a timesheet.
No, I think, you know, I'd rather-- No, I think, you know, I'd rather keep it, and then if it's required by the county retirement, well, at least you have it, you know? How are you going to go back?
I mean, we've got to document, basically, they've got so many days of sick time, so many days of vacation time, it's documented right there on the timesheet, you know? Unless we change the system and go to them actually putting in their vacation time, but then how are you going to do your sick time? You're not going to have that in advance.
No, I think just keep it the way it is. I mean, why, you know, that's my opinion.
Keep it the way it is?
What's that?
Keep it the way it is?
I would, yeah.
I know your view.
I think Paul is-
Yeah, you know, I've never had to, I've never had to fill out a timesheet till I came here. I think it's a, I think it's a waste of my time.
How did you keep track of sick and vacation? Yourself?
No, no, actually, the town where I worked previous, it was actually the accountant who kept track of everybody's time. And we had, we had, I had to approve everybody's personal time. So, there was a sheet that was filled out, filled out by the employee, I would have to sign it, you know, for personal time and vacation time and sick time.
So, for like full-time people, they probably just got the same pay every week?
Same pay, you know?
Like you and Phil and I?
Nobody has to sit down, nobody has to sit down and examine the timesheet, and, you know, it's-
Yeah, but who is examining the timesheets? My office.
Right.
And I have no complaints.
Yeah.
So, why are we even complaining? I mean, my assistant, you know, does the payroll, and she has no complaints. Her only complaint is that, and I never hear complaints on department heads' timesheets. You know, we were having problems with, as was addressed in the last finding on the Department of Public Works, okay? So, we're not the ones that are complaining, and we're the ones that have to do all the work. So, in my opinion, I think we should keep it the way it is.
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
No, it's not.
But it just seems rather silly to me.
Well, let's, we'll leave it for now, we can always come back to that, we could change it at any time, but just leave it as is for now. Fraud prevention. Development of a fraud policy, this is the old internal management control.
This is right.
We've heard this before.
I haven't sent him a copy of what I have done on that, but I will.
Okay, so, you are developing an internal management control policy?
I have that done.
Setting up a process to examine periodically certain areas?
That's the last part.
Okay.
I'm doing the individual departments that handle cash, what the cash, the flow is and their responsibilities, and then I'm going to do an analysis of, and prioritize, like where the departments or areas should be looked at most often, because they're susceptible to whatever theft or what have you, yeah. So, I'm going to send him what I have for that one.
Okay.
But that's that one that I've owed you for four, five, six years.
I know. Related to this, and of course you can't test your controls unless you have your policies in place-
Right.
Are some suggestions about policies and procedures that should be established? Maintenance of record? I'm not sure.
This page ten?
Maintenance of records of reasonable detail accurately and fairly reflect the transactions. What?
Which item are you on, Jeff?
I'm on page 10.
Page 10, okay. The recommendation item?
Yeah.
Oh, that would be... That's related to the previous one.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, that's what he's talking about, establishing a formal policy or procedure manual.
A daunting task, as Tony points out.
Well, you've made that clear, but it's time to get on with it.
Yeah.
So, when's that going to be done?
Well, after this week, and then after vacation, I can get back onto that.
No, just, I just, when's the completion date?
Oh, I don't know at this point. We've got to start instituting the reconciliations, I'll just have to fit it in. There's not that much left to do, you know? I could give you a date, I've given you many of them.
Yes. No, it doesn't, you know, don't make it something that's achievable, not-
Yeah.
Because this has just gone on forever.
I would say-
And it's just a recurring-
Before the end of the fiscal year.
Scan and, in here, used to bring the same thing up, strengthen our policies.
As an example, and of course, my predecessor has everything documented as far as procedures, okay? I mean, there's various things, like for instance, using the, our software to reconcile the bank accounts, okay? You can do that manually, of course, but you know, we have software that does it for you, and I mean, I have this book that my assistant showed me, and every step is detailed, I mean, in detail, I'm talking about the computer screen, documents, so I use that, I mean, up to now, I use that every month, I refer to that, to go through the steps of doing that. So, that's, when a predecessor takes over, I mean, you'd be lost if you didn't have this documentation, okay? So, it's not so much, you know, I think it's for predecessors to have a documentation of the procedures of how they work in each department. I mean, you know, I got, you know, different sections on, you know, how payroll's supposed to be submitted, okay, by the departments. I have procedures on, you know, how department's supposed to turn over cash, okay? So, it's all documented. I mean, it's documented how to do the W-2s, how to issue the 1099 documents, everything's documented. So, that's what, you know, you should have, and that's not just the financial offices, that Tom Clark's office should have that, the Selectance Office should have that, you know, how do you, you know, is there a procedure written of how do you process your recycling center, you know, the permits, okay? That all should be documented in some books, so when a predecessor comes in, or somebody's out for an extended period of time, you have a guide to use, okay? So, it's a good thing, definitely a good thing to have.
It's a continuity.
It does work, but it does take, I'll admit, you know, in Mike's, it does take time to put this together.
But what you're also saying is, a number of folks already have-
Yes.
Lots of this, but it's all in little pockets and now packaged up.
I have that for like processing invoices and that kind of thing.
So, it's not a cold start?
No, no, it isn't, no.
No.
Okay, so, you've got the con on this one, and another six months or so, we'll have a cut at it?
In the fiscal year, let's shoot for that, or earlier.
Earlier than the next, we'd like to exercise the internal control program once and ahead of the next audit.
And I think you pointed out, there's no penalty for being early.
That's, I always point that out. Purchasing. I wasn't aware we had guidance out that is contrary, or is more stringent than Chapter 30B. I mean, who would have published it?
Yeah, I have not come across it, so this was news to me, but it's kind of-
Well, what do we need, what do we need?
Kind of irrelevant, actually, because you have to go, whatever we say doesn't, whatever is written down doesn't matter, because we have to follow the state guidelines, the state statutes, so. But I don't, I don't know where that is, you know, in terms of town bylaw.
What we're talking about here is, the auditor suggested that in certain areas, we had more stringent requirements than measures, general law, Chapter 30B regarding purchasing thresholds for certain actions, dollar thresholds. Ours were more stringent than the states required, and again, as a way of simplifying our work to let folks know, follow 30B. So, you're going to issue, why don't you take that on to provide some guidance to all the folks as to, you know, the guidelines are, and they've got some other good things here about copies of all contracts going to the accountant, remember?
Yeah.
Also, some process suggestions on contract maintenance. So, that all ought to be coming from you as our chief procurement officer.
Just so I can interject, I think some of the problems, when I was an auditor, I had in the past was, and that's one of the things, you know, an auditor is required to look for, is make sure you're following the state guidelines, okay? But the problem that we always had was centralization, okay? For instance, the way an auditor would test that is, he goes in and he goes through the list of expenditures for the year, okay, to the vendor thing. You know, you'll see somebody that gets $50,000, okay, of services, okay? And under the general laws, that's required to be, you know, competitively, you know, proposals, okay? It depends on what kind of it is, whether it's competitive bidding or it's proposals. Nine out of 10 times, it's proposals, okay? Well, so you obtain the contract, okay? You see the contract wherever, okay? But then, you can't find the sheet that's supposed to be kept on, who you call to, you know, receive these proposals, okay? So, in my, you know, there should be a central location, I mean, the town accountant, which is basically the office, okay? I mean, in that file should be the contract, it should be a list of the quotes that they obtained. See, that's the problem, because most of your department heads keep their quotes themselves, it's not with the contract. So, you spend, you know, two hours trying to track down these quotes, okay? So, that's the, that's the big problem. It's not necessarily that they're not following the procedures, it's documentation of the procedures, okay? And a lot of towns, they actually have a sheet that, you know, is given to all the departments, which they actually fill out, okay? You may not have any-
Scoring sheet with-
Yeah, I mean, just very simple, you know, the three firms or the three companies that they call, and the amounts, and who was awarded. But it's all together, you know, shouldn't be, you know, the contract shouldn't be in one place, and the quote should not be in another place, and various things like that, it should all be in one place. And then that shows you that you did document, and the inspector general, anytime can come in and look at that. So, you know, it just should be in one place, and I think sort of that's what, you know, they're sort of getting at, I mean, that's the crux of the problem, is everything in one place, showing that you did file the proper procedures of awarding their contract.
We don't have any form right now that we use, and it's just, do we even document it?
Just as far as I know, I can't, I can't speak for all departments.
You document all your quotes?
Yes.
All right, so-
So, you have your own, right?
Yes.
Keep your own.
Okay.
So, I mean, I just, I'm supposed to get a copy of the contract?
Yeah, I understand.
Well, I think it just goes along with, you should have the quotes too, because it's your, really, it's your responsibility to see if they actually, you know, actually got proposals. Well, somebody has to, or the-
Really?
I don't, do we have a procurement officer in this town?
It doesn't say that a law, I think.
Okay, so you should really, you know, so, since you're, since we have a former procurement officer in this town, which is Paul, the town administrator, then that should be actually the central location, I mean, Mike still needs a copy of it, but that's where each contract that's awarded, if Phil, you know, awards a contract, those should come down to you, and there should be a file maintained on that contract with the proposal, with the quotes in there. That's where it should be, it should be with the procurement officer.
Okay.
Well, I can just say that what we did in North Hampton, I used to get four copies, have them do four copies, and one for the department, one for, well, the mayor's office or your office, one for the vendor, and one for me.
Yeah, yeah, one, as in addition to that, you know, one thing that I've noticed since I've been here, that a lot of the contracts that are being put forward, there's no line in there for the accountant to sign off on, and that's required by law.
Yes.
And I've seen some old contracts here where they were awarded, the accountant never signed off on them. The accountant has to sign off that-
Supposed to, yeah.
That there are funds available.
Okay, well, you're going to clean up that with publishing some guidance? And then, part of that, how about this, dealing with the quotes? Had a suggestion about essentially recording the, documenting the verbal quotes?
Yeah, it's a good idea, I'm not going to-
You just tell people to do it.
Yeah.
And then you'll outline the thresholds and- Well, I guess in that also, you're going to put out about contracts being maintained by the accountant?
Yeah.
Create the sheet for three quotes?
Mm-hmm.
And we're not going to do the purchase order system, correct?
No, no, that doesn't make any sense.
Overkill for us.
That's a standard, you know, that usually, you know, management letters is a, because it's just, you know, purchase orders that you should have, but this size community, no.
More work than-
This could be more work.
Yeah, more trouble than it's worth.
It works in, you know, larger towns and cities, I mean, cities have it, where, you know, a formal purchase order system, but for the town of this size and the activity, no.
School department uses one, they have-
Yeah, but it's not, it's not a formal one, you know?
They sign a number.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know.
Is this next one covered by your monthly reconciliations? This comment on page 12, under cash handling? We need to reconcile the treasurer's or town accountant's office who turn over cash?
They indicated some, we have, I already have a policy in there about town departments.
Okay, and then he had some suggestions for you to-
You know, I'll bring up an example, I like to mention the department, but I just had one last week, okay? My department turned over a check that was dated November 30th. Yeah, it's November 30th, okay? And there's three of them, okay? And I called two of the people, okay, on the phone personally, because what happens with a, you know, when a check doesn't clear, is a procedure I have to follow. So, I figured, well, I'm going to try to prevent this procedure by calling them, okay, since it was not the person's fault in this instance. Two out of the three people, I called one individual, and they had closed the account, you know, so I says, well, then, so they're going to issue me a new check, okay, which is fine, okay? The second department, the second individual that I called, they have, it was a school department, they have a parents' account, okay? And they only transfer money into this, this parents' account, you know, when they need the money, okay? And of course, they didn't transfer it in for the November check, so she was going to transfer the money. The third person, individual, I could not get a hold of. And wouldn't you know, that is the check that did not clear. And then, so, the town incurred a $25 fine, okay? Then, required by law, if you, you know, if you, if a check bounces, I have to charge $25 by law, it's a matter of running a letter and all that. So, I waived the fee in this instance, I did finally get in touch with the person, okay? I waived the fee just because, and the first thing was, well, how come you didn't deposit the check? And no, that was dated November, of course, it was not my office, okay? And I had a couple instances in the past, I've sent out emails saying that, you know, do not keep checks for, you know, I mean, I would like to see, you know, weekly turnovers, okay? I am here on Thursdays, so I'd like to, you know, and I would say, you know, nine out of 10 departments have their money in on Thursday, okay? But I do have, you know, one particular department that is always late, and it happened again, so I remind them again, but I mean, it's not fair to the individual, it's not fair to me, where if you have a check that you write on November 30th, you know, it should be in my office by at least the, you know, first couple weeks in December, not in February, okay? So, that is in our policy already. But he just indicated some new, you know, some other, I think, two or three things to include in the policy, so that's no problem.
Okay, so you're adopting and modifying as he proposed here?
Exactly.
Under cash handling, okay. Grant awards, not a possession of the town accountant, well, that comes under the same thing as-
Well, there are, there are a few departments that send them to me all the time. Brenda does.
All right, is there some guidance out somewhere that says? Copies of grant awards, you should be getting a copy?
I should, I should send another memo out, you mean, to remind people that I should get a copy of every grant. But like I say, some do-
All right, you're going to do that?
Police, fire, council on aging, school, they usually send them. Well, at least, if they don't send it, I don't know that they didn't send it.
Well, that's, his issue was with the school here, so.
Yeah.
All right, so you're going to do something on that?
Yes.
Get some guidance out?
Well, I guess then I have a question about that.
Yes.
Because we do receive some grants or other things, and sometimes the grants don't come to the department. Because we do receive some grants or other things and sometimes the grants don't come to the department. So where do they go as far as an award?
Like some actual document awarded?
Correct.
Oh. I don't know.
Because I've been into the treasurer clerk's office in the past where they said, we've received the grant award letter. I had no clue we even received it.
You mean the actual cash or...
The actual award letter.
Letter.
Saying that we received the grant, we were awarded the grant.
I've never really seen a letter. I get the receipt in. What happened is I, like, I got a, yesterday I got notified from Unibank, which the state uses the Unibank to deposit all the state money. I got a twenty thousand dollar receipt in from Communities Development. I have no idea, as we speak right now, who the twenty thousand dollars is. So twenty thousand dollars has been deposited into the town's bank account.
Community development grant?
I talked with Paul and Phil this morning.
Who is it? What grant we have?
Center school.
Yeah, I did not know that. I knew there was a grant out for the center school, but I did not know that. So all I get is, you know, the state agency comes from, Communities, you know, Development. So I, but I have no idea what the twenty thousand is.
Yeah.
So that's a perfect example of where's who, where's the grant award? I don't know where it is.
Right.
It must be in your office.
It's in my office.
And, you know, before, when your predecessor was here, has come to me in the past and saying, we received this much money, is it a grant? Or even a FEMA reimbursement that came back?
Yeah, I received one.
He had no idea.
No.
And we didn't have any idea because we never received a letter of that.
But again, with a FEMA reimbursement, because one did come in during my time and, you know, somebody, a FEMA grant, somebody has to submit to get that money. So the document is around somewhere and somebody has to submit to get the money. They don't get the money right, I mean, they don't make it up. So a document is submitted from the town, okay, saying this is how much we incurred for, you know, the snowstorm that we had and this is the amount that, and that really gets complicated because there's two sources. I mean, the federal government gives us seventy-five percent when they declared the blizzard that we had, okay? And the governor declares a state of emergency, we get money in, okay? We do the work, we submit the reimbursement into FEMA, the federal government gives us seventy-five percent, the state gives us twelve and a half percent, but the state comes in like two years later, okay? And then the town is supposed to provide twelve and a half percent share. So, you know, those grants don't come in, you know, at the same time. So again, you get this money, it all come in, like eighteen thousand dollars come in and have no idea what it's for. And that has to be known because then the town accountant has to charge that to the proper account, okay? But if that agreement, if that document had come down originally, because, you know, what I like, what I would like to do is when I get the grant award letter, keep it in a file and then when the money comes in, I can pull that one out and say, okay, we received the money. Because I have no idea what's out there that has not been, you know, reimbursed for, okay?
So in addition to the accountant, the collector should be getting...
Treasurer.
Excuse me, the treasurer should be getting a copy of the grant?
Absolutely. So I know that the money is gonna be coming in because we do, you know, mistakes are made at the state level where, you know, I got money in a month ago that belonged to the town of Hadley, okay? Again, you know, I mean, how do I know, you know? So that's an example of where we would break down if you don't have the proper documentation.
Alright, so, well, is this something that should be coming out from you as a more general?
You know, a suggestion that I should make, I know it's hard, but, you know, maybe, you know, at the beginning of each fiscal year, maybe it's a matter of having a meeting with the department heads, okay? And going over, you know, what the guidelines are for each of the departments, this is what you're gonna do. Because, you know, in defense of the departments, maybe some of them don't realize what they have to do, okay? Like Mike says, there are departments that are very good, there's other departments that are lacking. But maybe that's an idea, just have a meeting, you know, of all the department heads and go over, or even when you, you know, you have meetings, I don't know, for the, I know a long time ago in this town, they used to have an overall meeting when they discussed the budget. I know you do individually now, but I know a couple times, you know, they implemented where, you know, when the budget would start, they'd have all the department heads in a departmental meeting and go over the guidelines of how the budget would be, okay? So they could implement a meeting like that where you could do two things. You could, you know, say this is what the budget looks like for this year and then these are the procedures that each department has to follow. I mean, that would, I think that'd be a great idea to do.
And we could give them the info or ask about, you know, the grant, copies of the grants, copies of contracts and put together a package for them. Some might just put it in a drawer, but maybe not all of them.
Okay, good. Valid driver's license, function of, well, a suggestion about periodically checking validity of individuals' driver's license, given there's a potential liability to town if they're driving a town vehicle and... So you've got something in...
Yeah, we have a, we have an annual...
How about COA? Well, strives, COA? Is that it?
I would do that, everybody, anybody that uses any town vehicle.
Well, the building inspector, I guess.
Mm-hmm. For the health, they use a vehicle. He may use a vehicle.
No, I never, I didn't know I could.
No, I'm serious though, you, right? I mean, to go to the bank or whatever, you can take a company, I mean, you can take a town vehicle.
Right, it'd be more work to get the vehicle.
I think, I think the best thing is just have everybody do it and be done with it. Just have them, once a year, just have them come in, photocopy their license, put it on file, you're done. That should cover the whole thing.
Okay, who should do that?
Of course.
The guy that makes the most money.
Oh. That's not me.
Superintendent of schools.
Yeah.
I mean, what's a logical collection point?
Each department should have their own. I think that would cover it personally. You know, like, his department, right now, he's got everything on file, right?
Yes.
Fire department should have everything on file, police department should have everything on file. That way, if the auditor comes in, here it is.
How about, again, in your package, something, the department's about, institute something where they collect periodically, at least annually, information on the status of the driver's licenses for people who use government vehicles in their department?
We could check the police log in the Gazette every day and see if there are any familiar names of them losing their license.
That's another issue about logs, but not for here. Investment policy and you're, you had a variety of things. Talked about deposits, investments, interest rate risk, credit risks and so on.
Yeah.
And your notion was to set up some kind of advisory committee to help you with...
Yeah, maybe like twice a year, you know, and I'll, when I come to, I'm deciding who I have on it. There's actually, I mean, the state puts out guidelines of what should, who should be on this committee and I'll give it to you to the board and they can appoint the people. Similar to like what you have for capital, you know, you have a capital planning committee. I mean, there's some people that are on there already, I mean, that are established by the guidelines to being, you know, ex-official people on there.
Okay, so the action treasurer is gonna come up with a proposed charter and...
Well, not a charter, by the way.
Well, it describes what the purpose of the group is and what their functions are and that's all. It's not a couple paragraphs long. Electronic billing, we already took care of that. Board of selectmen voted to authorize the collector to institute fee billing. Whether the collector chooses to do that, that's up to the collector. Contributions to the Hampshire County Regional Retirement System? And that's timing of the payment to take advantage of.
Oh, yes, yeah. It will start this year.
Laura, if you pay it upfront, you get a deduction?
July.
Okay, and we're gonna do that?
Yeah, July.
So, alright. So that's the answer to that. Ambulance monitoring and write-off policy, and you've already got the action on that to come up with a...
I am, and just as a sideline, I'm gonna schedule to be an agenda to talk about the ambulance at some point, okay? But that's gonna be in a couple weeks, okay? I'll tell you all.
Well, could you, because we're gonna be talking about budget if it has any impact on that, I'd be very interested in your comment.
I've noticed that the ambulance revenues are drastically down from the prior year, okay? And I'm gonna do a comparison of last year to this year because I've been noticing the receipts that have been coming in. I mean, last month I received, the town received four hundred and twenty dollars in ambulance receipts. I think we have, selectmen have to address whether we should have an ambulance department because the receipts are just not coming in. And I don't want you, the town, to use those estimated receipts based upon last year's, you know, receipts because there is a definite decline in ambulance. And I wanna find out what the, you know, why the reason is there's a decline. I don't believe it's, we use, we use CoSto to billing service that actually, you know, bills and receives the money and then every month they send the money over to me, you know, through the collector's office. And there's just been, you know, there's a couple months, there's been no receipts coming in, okay? So I, I think my responsibility as treasurer is I'm gonna bring that to your, the board's attention to see why this is happening, okay?
Did you say that it's probably not a situation where there's fewer people requiring it?
I don't know, Mike, I don't know, I'm just assuming, I don't know.
It would be an upside if less people require them, but...
I don't know, I have to investigate why the receipts are lower. Could be any number of things.
They were last year too. But of course, they budget each year, you know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars that, and they didn't spend anywhere near that. So that goes back over to the fund at the end of the year.
I think the whole area has to be addressed.
Okay, we'd like to do that sooner than later.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I just wanna get, I just wanna develop a worksheet for you, you know, so we have something to go by.
Treasurer turnover, we've already addressed that, that's... You're handing off stuff to the town accountant. Alright, we have a, I thought we were gonna embed the answers in here, but I guess, I guess we'll just make an attachment to this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say just have an attachment.
Document?
Just in case, you know, because now, once, you know, your board accepts it, okay, then it's a public document, so... You know, I think that, you know, in fairness to the town, we should also have as part of the management letter, the, our responses. I don't, you know, we've always, you know, my former firm, I always put the responses in the management letter right after the finding, okay? You do have a different auditing firm, so I'm not too sure what their practice is, so... In my opinion, it should really be part of the management letter, you know, your responses. I mean, that's like the second part of it, you know, you have the management letter and you have what, how you're gonna correct these problems.
Right, right.
So, you know, if they're not gonna put in the official document, then your suggestion of having some kind of an attachment, you know, I think would be great.
Well, we can go back and ask if we can...
Yeah, I would, I would, it wouldn't hurt to ask.
Yeah.
If not, we'll just make a...
You know, we have yet to receive, you know, bound copies of the...
Right, so it's not, so as far as I, you know, maybe it's not final yet, maybe that's just a matter of, you know, I mean, in some, you know, some audits that we dealt with, sometimes, you know, there's two ways of doing it. You know, some cities and towns had it right after the finding, other ones just, you know, put them all on one page and then they attach it as an appendix, you know, to the report, okay? I mean, that's the easier way. So I would go that route because then you don't have to cut and paste and do all that. Just put it at the end of the report, these are the responses and that's it. Then it's all documented. So it's gonna, you know, it'll avoid you having another meeting where, you know, if some departments or the press or whatever wants to have another meeting, the responses are right in that, in the report, okay?
Any more questions?
No.
I appreciate your time.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public safety complex or building? Is this the move plan?
Yeah, I mean, I've got this on here just because it's an ongoing, but there's really not much to report. It's still, they're still working on it. There was actually nobody there yesterday, but I noticed this morning that there's a couple of trucks out front. So the building is, you know, practically done. There's still some things that, you know, follow up, things that need to be accomplished. And once again...
Have we created the punch list?
I don't think the punch list has been created yet. Yeah, I know, I was talking with the building inspector yesterday and, you know, he confirmed that, you know, the project is almost done. And I also was talking with the fire chief and the police chief yesterday and they, they've ordered some new furnishings and it's gonna be several weeks before they come in. We've also ordered some new computers for the fire department. But so, my guess at this point is we're probably looking at another month before they actually move in. Could be, could be as long as six weeks.
Okay.
There's no, you know, big outstanding issues, you know?
Well, as I mentioned, there's nothing compelling that they move out of the spaces they're in.
No, no.
It just seems like it's being dragged along.
Yeah, yeah, there's no point in anybody moving in there until they're absolutely done.
Okay, is there anything left here for this first phase of town hall?
Not that I'm aware of.
Punch list items have been taken care of?
You know, I just talked to the architect yesterday, I mean, the final payment has not been made. I just talked to the architect yesterday and he said that, you know, he's gonna wanna do another walkthrough with the contractor, you know, within another week or two to see if there's, you know, anything else that needs to be done.
Or that he did the punch list. Okay.
So the initial punch list has been completed, you know? He wants to go through it again, make sure that, in fact, there's nothing left.
Okay. Yeah.
We can bring that up.
It's missing. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you know if they put a catwalk up on us through here?
I don't know. I don't think so.
I'm just wondering how we're gonna wash those windows up there.
Yeah. Good question.
I mean, you got windows that go all the way up to the second floor.
Budget issues, resolution, schedule? If we could, let's, I propose kind of way ahead. I'd like to talk through what we have as issues, maybe close on some, get them on the table anyway for the longer term across the board and then we'll spend some specific time on your budget. Because some of the stuff falls out.
Right.
And affects your budget. But... This is probably not in line with here, but, alright, COLA, we've not addressed.
No.
Do we have views? I mean, I realize we're gonna close on that after we see what the entire picture is.
Yeah.
But...
Normally we put...
We're in about the one, the 1.5 range?
Well, you know, my opinion is that...
COLA should be COLA, not raises.
Right. I, my opinion is that, I know, I saw, I saw an email there from Jeff... I, uh, my opinion is that, I know, I saw, I saw an email there from Jeff that the federal government is actually, after three years of no COLAs, are proposing a 1% COLA. Though, my opinion is because the highway department has got a three-year contract with, with, with 2% increases in each year, I think it's unfair for other town employees not to receive the same benefit. That's my opinion. I don't think it's good for morale.
Well, again.
Because everybody knows that, and it is, and it is a point of contention.
What's the school getting?
1.5.
They get 1.5?
Well, we'll, we'll close that, well, we can get the numbers easily.
Yeah.
As to what true cost of living is. And it's probably best we determine that after.
We need to, we need to.
We're done, take a look where we are.
To look at the whole budget, where we stand with the levy limit.
Okay, what about a second item? Individual raises, there were some specifically requested, there are others to be considered if they're way out of line with comparable positions in other communities for their level of responsibility. We had any information or suggestions come back from the HR advisory?
Not yet, we've had to cancel, we've had to cancel two scheduled meetings because of the weather. But our next meeting is scheduled for tonight.
Okay, so, COLA is still.
Up in the air.
Up in the air, individual raises, up in the air. Waiting on that one for any, for any recommendations to be considered from HR committee. We went through the school budget. The only thing I saw there, and it's not really an operating budget item, but it's a capital budget item, is the amount that we need to put before voters at town meeting as our cost share for the grant. And I'm confused by the language that the Massachusetts School Building Authority provided. Early on in all the discussions, and you have a meeting on the sixth, I think. So why don't we get this sorted out then?
Yeah.
Early on, the certification we signed said that we would front the entire cost, and then be reimbursed the 51 point, just under 51%, in $50,000 increments. And the whole thing would be done in 18 months. That proposed article for town meeting drafted by Massachusetts School Building Authority says, as I read, that we would only request the amount not covered by the grant. So I'm a little, I'm a little confused, as do.
Yeah.
And it makes, it makes a big difference.
It makes a huge difference.
And the second piece that's still open regarding that is the contribution toward that project from the school committee. You know, I understand that they're considering a sizable contribution toward the overall cost. That has not yet been voted.
Right.
So that's out there, so there's, so the school issue has to do with their project, and one, what's the verbiage for our town meeting article, number one? Related to that, that tells us how much we're really borrowing, or trying to borrow. And then two, what the results are of the vote. And between the two of those things tells us what we really need to go forward with. So that's all I had open for school.
Okay.
Board of Health, they were asking for essentially a almost double salary increase from stipends about $14,000 to almost 30, 28,000. And the the issues there are multiple. One, we just had a study committee looking at stipends for elected positions, those are elected positions, not staff. Both the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have been agreement, at least last year, and appears to date, on the direction we're looking to, I, here's an opportunity to professionalize the staff by bringing in outside talent to do certain functions and, and relieve them of certain functions. So are we still on track with the Finance Committee as, essentially leave it as it was? That is.
Yeah, I will be.
Dollars in the professional staff line, not increasing the stipend line, or not doubling it.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'll be meeting with members of the Finance Committee. We're trying, we're trying to set up a time next week to meet. And we're gonna go over the whole, the whole budget, line by line.
That's fine.
And I'm sure that.
We're trying to do that right now.
Yeah.
Okay, so would you go to that meeting? We're still, leave it in the lines, the same lines as they were last year?
Actually, in, in my budget, I deleted that $10,000 entirely, but, you know, that's.
Well, I think it's closer to 14.
Yeah, whatever the number was.
Yeah, it was.
14, 150, I think.
Whatever it was for.
Last year.
Last year. I'm pretty sure it was 14.
Okay, so, we're all on track on that.
I think, yeah.
DPW, I, just so there's no error, it's a small number, but on the form the DPW submitted for, in their entry for 14, they had the 14 column and the 15 column, their entry for 14 was incorrect. So makes, their entry requested for 15 is correct. So it's for snow and ice, 31, 488.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm aware of that.
Okay, it makes a difference because you gotta appropriate at least the amount you did last year in order to deficit spend if necessary. And we talked about Tony Listowski splitting between 50, 50 between water. Okay, is that?
I haven't done that yet, only because I just need to get his salary information.
Okay, well, all right, make sure that's, that's an action that's in there. Split between water and highway. Side issues are the sewer study, and we, again, this is not a operating budget, it's a capital budget item. Maybe we come back to that, let's put that as a sidebar for, after we have the overall budget discussion. Everyone was, Finance Committee, we are all agreed, it's something that needs to be done, comparable to the water study, looking out 10 years or so. For example, on the, we've got this on the water side, what needs to be done? The maintenance required, the costing or that. You read our various documents, the planning, master plan and other documents, keeps talking about marrying up with the infrastructure plan. Well, one's got a lead, I guess, so.
Do we have any idea how much something like that would cost?
Where is it that we want to extend our sewer?
Do we have any idea how much something like that would cost?
Did you get that, was it 50,000?
I think it's in there, I think it's in their.
It was, I think it's about $50,000, but did you get that from Comprehensive Engineering?
Yes.
Okay.
It was about 50,000.
Okay.
Because we're not looking just as a maintenance, we're looking at an outbuild as well.
Yeah. Where, where do we want to extend it? What's kind of, what's the long-term plan, so? We can bite off pieces as we go along. Chan wants sewer.
Yeah, do we wanna, I'll just throw this out. As opposed to putting this on the back burner, do we want to use some free cash this year to get that project going? Just an idea?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, we talked about it on our turn. I thought we were gonna take the remnant, the residual from the, these projects here and the complex behind us, as well as looking at what the free cash would be, I don't know, is it gonna be 180,000?
That's what I.
And put that into this account we're creating at town meeting for the, a town hall stabilization fund, which would go toward the Phase Two. So between those funds, plus what we already have from CPA, and potentially, there may be a way to get some additional funds from them, I don't know if we can justify it, but we have some money for the elevator, put toward the elevator. So between those things, we could really reduce the impact of the Phase Two, which of Town Hall, which has to be done, completed, operational by August of 2018. So instead of giving town folks a big bill later on, we have something saved up. I don't know, did you?
Yeah, that's, that's what we discussed, I know that.
Okay. Conservation. We're screwing around, excuse my French.
I don't see it work.
Conservation.
Yeah.
Have you all figured out, or has somebody come to you yet on the 1,500? You have 1,300 in one account, and 1,000 in another account. One's wetlands protection, one's a conservation fund, it's, it's at your disposal.
1,300 or 13,000?
13,000.
Right.
Actually, it's maybe 13, 5 or something like that. And the other one's, I know has 1,000.
Yeah.
So between the two funds, you could fund.
Fund that 1,500.
And my recommendation is you take a little bit from each because of the wording of what those funds could be used for. If you do that, then, one, you got it covered down, and two, you know, it's all legal.
They will have that at our next meeting.
So, for this, make sure that we don't have the 1,000 in here. Because it's not gonna be something appropriated at a town meeting, it's just gonna come out of funds that they already have.
Oh, okay. Okay.
There was a fund set up some years ago, a conservation fund, never been touched.
Never been touched, okay.
It's on the books, it has, they put 1,000 in it when they formed it, never touched it. So that would, so they'll take the money out of their two accounts and don't have to go to town meeting. And this would, this will buy us the regional conservation agent services through the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
You're sure that it's still active, as far as you know? That was our question, I mean.
I sent you the note I got from Chris Curtis, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. This whole thing comes under him, he says it's up and running, and we're looking forward to your participation. I don't know what else.
Yep, I hear you.
Assessors. There was a request there for a raise for the assessors clerk, and again, be interested in what recommendation comes from. You're not embedding those raises in your package here, are you? I don't know, I don't know what this is, I just got it before I walked in this morning.
Yes and no.
I don't know what that means.
It means some, some yes, some no.
Okay, well, we haven't voted on anything yet, so don't present that as a Board of Selectmen position then. VSO, no issues, library, no issues. Inspection services, with much regret, we received today notice from current building inspector, Mr. Stanley Sodowsky, announcing that he plans to retire. He also syndicated he'd be available for some part-time work subsequently, but, so, I guess for us, what does that mean for the budget? Do we need to? And, and maybe, we're not gonna resolve this today, but we need to decide how we're gonna approach the backfill, and then what that cost would be. He's proposed one way, it's more personality-based, another one option is go out and simply recruit, hire someone.
I think we should have him and the assistant come in with us and sit down and discuss the whole thing before, you know. I just looked at this real quick. I don't, I don't know how, how much we're gonna wanna spend for hiring on the outside. I do know there's towns that are looking for building inspectors, and they can't find them at their cost. We still have an opportunity here, you know, so I think that's what, we should sit down and discuss that.
Okay, so for right now, well, so right now, we don't have that salary line or expense line nailed down till we resolve, resolve the way ahead, but we need to come back to that pretty quickly. When are we meeting with the Finance Committee again?
I don't know, did we set up another time?
No.
No, 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 we haven't set up anything yet, well, when I get together with.
Get done with, your meeting with them.
Yeah.
Well, help me, what, what is your meeting with the Finance Committee?
Well, I'm just meeting with the chair and.
Daryl?
Daryl and Sean, and we're gonna go over this. We're gonna go over the line item budget.
Okay, well. Again, we haven't even looked at it. Planning Board, no issue. Historical Commission, no issue. Town Clerk. There's, town voted some years ago, a bonus of 1,000 if they get certified. The submission indicated that Town Clerk and Town Treasurer may not get certified this year. I'd suggest we just leave the money in there anyway, it's only 2,000, 1,000 each. If they don't get certified, then they don't get it, it just falls to free cash at the end of the year, rather than taking, trying to take it out. Just a reminder to all the department heads, if you have new positions, you're proposing new positions, you're supposed to identify them to the Town Clerk. Or, yeah, Town Clerk. And Town Treasurer, I suppose. Police, no issues there, no change. Account, Town Accountant, what are we gonna do here? You know, one of the things we heard this morning is we're going through the audit time available to complete all the necessary work. Town Administrator came in, one of the first things he noticed when he came, reported here was, didn't think there was enough time being devoted to the accounting function to get all the things done that need to get done. It's an important function. You know, if we're gonna do something. either using HCOG or augmentation with additional staff somehow, we need to change the change the amount of money we have against this function.
Yeah, I've increased the salary item substantially. Yeah. And in talking with the auditor, you know, you know, a lot of the issues that came up with the audit has to do with time. Yeah, there's simply it's not, it's not, I don't think it's a part-time job. I think it's a full-time job. In my discussions with the auditor, you know, he said, yeah, you really need, you know, his opinion is it's a thirty-two hour a week position. He said, you need somebody in there eight hours a day, you know, four days a week, Monday through Thursday. I think it's probably more than that. I think it's probably a forty-hour position or thirty-five or something like that, but something needs to be done or the management letters are just going to keep looking the same year after year after year and so I've increased the salary line there, you know, substantially just to, you know, as a point of discussion.
Okay, well, after, I've got some notes I'd like to go through, then we'll walk through your version, I guess. Understand what you're doing. Okay, so you've plugged in
I plugged in.
Some additional.
Yeah.
How about, one of the things that came up. Town treasurer was suggesting putting in some more money for the audit. Did we do that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
He's suggesting about three thousand more. Fire department. Number of issues here. One. We all agreed, press on and increase the operating budget to buy the additional six self-contained breathing apparatus bottles. That was an eight grand add. Now, all utilities for the garage and it's going to be under DPW?
That's what we said last year.
Okay, so we've taken out, have we taken out all utilities from police, fire, and ambulance and moved them to DPW and increased that line?
He had something in for maintenance on one of them, but I think that might be for the Northham station. I'm not sure. I was going to ask him and I forgot all about it. Didn't he have the chief, fire chief have a little bit in there for I think it was maintenance of the it wasn't much, I know that, but because you don't do anything down there.
We pay the utility costs, the fuel costs.
Down there?
Yeah, well, I know, Phil has increased his, his budget to, to take care of, you know, those utilities costs, yeah.
You have increased your budget to take care of it? You got it covered?
And a guesstimate.
I understand.
A guesstimate, yeah.
Okay. And you've transferred the funds that police, fire, and ambulance had in their budgets for
I have to go back. I can't remember what they did. I have to go back and look at their requests.
Well, it was in there.
Yeah.
It was still in there, but it needs to come out of there.
It needs to come out, yeah.
And then we said okay to police, excuse me, the fire is physical. Increase for physicals, increase for uniforms, and then the picking up BlackBerry Connect
Yeah.
Notification system. There, one of the biggies here, they're requesting essentially a new position for this right-to-know function, which had been assigned earlier to the Board of Health. Board of Health had no funds, extra funds to execute that responsibility. Appears to be purely administrative. And it won't be, I mean, if there's technical knowledge required, there's certainly no one in the fire department that has the that particular background or expertise or training. We've yet to see their what the actual skills required are. One, and we've yet to see the fire department's proposal for the integration of the ambulance into the fire department. So there's a whole bunch of things hanging here on fire. But I think they really only relate to this right-to-know position and the integration. You know, if we integrate fire and ambulance, ambulance had a manager position and an assistant manager position. And if, the argument is this makes sense because we don't have a call center and it's not a twenty-four by seven operation, et cetera, et cetera. About the only, the argument was being made that it made sense from a management point of view in that the fire chief could absorb certain of the management responsibilities. Well, then do we need a ambulance manager and a assistant manager? Or do we simply designate the fire chief to be essentially the manager absorb those functions, which the training and the budgeting and that kind of thing, which he's, he's going to be doing anyway as the fire chief. And leave the assistant manager, ambulance manager position? That would free up six grand right there that we could use to offset.
I thought that's what, I thought that's what our plan was, wasn't it? I mean.
Well, I know, yeah, I just talked to Steve Gahn, you know, the acting ambulance manager, and he and the fire chief are, are, you know, working on the plan. They're, you know, they're trying to figure out how this is all going to work and you know, I think they'll have something to actually present to the board in a few weeks. So, you know, they're, we don't, we're, nobody really knows what the plan is yet. They're working on it.
The treasurer's working on a plan too.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry?
I says their treasurer just got done saying he's working on a plan too, so
Yeah.
It may be interesting.
Yes.
I don't know.
For the ambulance.
For the ambulance.
Remember he said he wanted to meet with us?
Yeah, well, I think, you know, the
Well, okay, wait.
Yeah.
I'm unconvinced, I guess, I'm not convinced yet about this right-to-know position, whether it warrants a position where this is purely administrative, keeping on file these sheets, safety sheets, performing inspections, but can't we do that with another community or on a shared basis?
I did talk to a town north of us and basically the fire chief.
Does it?
Does it, and it's, it's according to, it's, it's not really, is probably not what the state really wants, but it's it's something. I mean, they have record of all their businesses on file. And that's pretty much it, you know? So I'm not sure what other towns are doing. Like I said, I just asked.
I can do a little searching there, talk to some
It's either through the fire department or through the emergency management. That's where it is. And the reason for that is that they have all the documents what's in the building in case there, something happens.
Yeah, well, they sure do. Well, that's purely an administrative job and that's how many, it's not as though we've got thousands of such businesses, but all right, well.
Yeah, I could see, you know, a big city or like Northampton or something like that where you
Probably would need someone.
Okay, so we've not closed on this right-to-know. We've closed on moving the function, that's fine.
Yeah.
We've not closed on the resources to required, nor their source. Whether or not we could potentially use either the ambulance manager and/or ambulance assistant manager funds to offset any increased cost. That'd be our first look if we had to. All right. So that's an open one. Council on Aging. Again, we're looking for HR Advisory Committee. Here's some, looking for pay raises for the director and assistant director. Program increase. And transportation, I was not, I was not clear about the tran, are you clear on the transportation increase you're talking about? You keep talking about the benefited position.
Yeah, I'm not recalling at the moment.
The what?
Benefited position, I'm
I mean, that would be someone who's working more than twenty hours a week.
Is it twenty?
It's twenty, yeah.
Not more than twenty. It starts right at twenty?
Yeah.
Twenty or more, I think it is.
Well, I guess we've gone down this trail a hundred times with not aggressively enough, I guess, on the transportation. Whether we use FRT, Franklin Regional. Anyway, we're, HR, on the COA, we're waiting on any recommendations or suggestions from the HR, the director and assistant director. The collectors asking for increased hours and an increase in their, in rate. Again, you know, another issue with nothing to do with the individual, it's a terrific person. Is this a staff or elected position? It's elected, we treat as staff. Wants to increase the hours from twenty-six to thirty. Well, as an elected official, there's no reason doesn't require any approval to do that, just do it. Asking for increased compensation. Any is this another one for the HR?
I think so, yeah.
I think she's asking for about a half a buck an hour more. All right, so that's another one for HR to be looking at the collector. Treasurer, no changes suggested. That doesn't mean, I mean, if, again, if the HR committee has any other suggestions on any position
Yeah.
we're interested in. So let's, let's talk to your package over here.
Well, we've pretty much gone over everything already, quite frankly. You know, I have left all the salaries level funded at this point, except for a few. I'm just going to hit on a couple of items here that I think are important.
Well, are we, are we clear? Do you have a good list of what, kind of our open issues?
Yeah, I mean, this is still very much a work in progress here. But I'll reiterate on the accountant issue, we need to allocate more resources to that. On the, I also
I'm on
Okay, that's a
Okay, which, which, how about talking, give us the line number here.
Okay.
On the account, you're talking about one thirty-five?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the yeah, one thirty-five, yeah. Yeah, forty-five thousand dollars. And that's salary, you know, if, you know, it could, that could be divvied up into salary and expenses if we hire, you know, an outside entity to do additional work. But I think that that's the dollar amount we need to be looking at to get the job done. The other one here
Well, that was, that was the treasurer's suggestion about you know, bringing somebody in to help out with some of those documents like the Schedule A and the certification of free cash and all that.
Yeah, I, you know, however you want to look at it, I do also believe that the collector, there needs to be more resources allocated to that position. But once again, you know, that is something that we'll be discussing with the Human Resources Committee.
More resources in terms of hours of the collector?
Yes, yes.
How many hours roughly does she put in? Do you know offhand? I mean, I don't even know. I have no idea. How many hours does she put in a week?
Yeah, I think it's twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
And wants to go to thirty, or which can do tomorrow.
Yeah, maybe I don't want to, I don't want to look at it as, you know, we're all hung up, she's an elected official. You know, we're, and we're all hung up on this hourly thing here.
Yes.
It's just a matter of, she just wants to be compensated adequately. And we should be compensating her adequately to do the job required and forget about the whole hourly thing. So, but I support that.
No, that's an issue because it keeps coming up across the board.
Yeah.
You need to be consistent in how we treat our people.
Yep, I totally agree. And, yeah, so with the EMS training, you know, we've, you know, we've eliminated that, that line item and built it into
I'm sorry, your number?
Oh, I'm on the second page now. And that's, well, it doesn't have a, it doesn't have, it's right under ambulance, which is two thirty-one. So we're, you know, as we talked before, we're building that, that training item into the fire department budget.
That's the same thing.
Okay, but the totals then, it's still the same, it's just like what line it shows up on.
Yeah. Yeah, and that
No, that's training for everybody, basically.
Yeah, yeah, and that, I think something happened on that fire department because that, that, those numbers aren't right. I don't know what happened there. Jumping down to the Board of Health. My recollection was that there was an additional ten thousand dollars allocated for a part-time health agent. So for, for now, I've just eliminated that money altogether and, you know, we can decide how we want to deal with that in the future.
Well, no, I thought
I'm pretty sure it was fourteen.
Yeah, it's fourteen.
If you look over here in salary of fiscal, you're fourteen, right? It says fourteen right there.
Yeah. It is fourteen. Or fourteen, one fifty, or something like that.
This year.
But, no, we've had this discussion with the finance committee once.
Yeah.
And the notion is to keep it there and the whole intent is to move towards
Professionalize.
More professionalization.
Completely support it.
Because some of the people there are not going to be there forever and this is a way to
Yeah, I think I
Transition.
Yeah, I had put this together before that meeting occurred, so there's still a lot of tinkering that needs to happen here. And just a, another, you know, point of information under Veterans Benefits, which is five, four, three, FY fourteen, it was fifty thousand dollars. The request for this year is forty-five. I looked at what we're paying out now and it's considerably less than that, so I looked at what we're paying out now and it's considerably less than that, so I reduced that amount by another $5,000, down to 40.
And for folks, we get reimbursed 75% of that from the state, but it's usually maybe a year late.
And yeah, that's, that's it. So it's still early in the process, this is still a work in, in process.
Yeah, for example, we haven't reflected here, we're gonna talk about, like, the Town Hall Phase Two.
Right.
About here.
So if we can jump to the warrant, which is coming together.
I'm sorry, Jay, you had a question on Fire Department before we move off, what?
I, I found in the budget, Lou came in with his budget, he had some
Building maintenance?
Yeah.
Right here.
Okay, it is in there.
Five
How much is it?
Fifty, $500.
Yeah.
Yeah, $1,000 and 14 and 500 and
Yes, I'm assuming that might be for something up at the, the other station.
Okay. Alright, now we're talking about warrant. Before, before we do one by one, just just let me do a reset. The view is, we don't need a 350th anniversary account.
First, first I've heard of it.
Ed's comment was, there, there is one.
There is one? I mean, do we add to it? Obviously, it's gotta run out, you know?
Is there one, is the question?
Well, there may be one, but I'm saying
1670 is our founding, so we got a, something coming up here, and it takes some time to orchestrate one of these. So if we have one, that's fine.
I can find out.
If we don't have one, we need some small accounts, just to get something started. Okay, we got the medical marijuana in here somewhere?
Yep.
Okay, did the, the planning board meet on this so-called noise?
Yeah, why don't we just go through it all and we, I can
Wait, just, I've just got a list, and you tell me, and we'll, we'll spend some time.
Okay.
Did Planning Board meet?
Yes.
And, and did they act on that? Or do we know what the results are?
Uh, the marijuana bylaw?
No, the noise.
Yes, and they're not, they're not recommending it.
Okay, so it'll probably be by petition then.
Yeah, I actually, I talked to I talked to the chairman yesterday, as a matter of fact, and they had, they had a hearing on that, there were quite a few people in attendance, and essentially, no one was in favor of it.
We did have clarification, just, just what we're talking about, right-to-farm bylaw, and some folks have had issues with so-called noise of nuisance kind of things. We do have clarification from Town Council that right-to-farm bylaw applies only to commercial activities. So if someone deserts its commercial activity, right-to-farm, they can demonstrate that they're commercial and and they're, I guess, covered. Otherwise, they're, they're treated like if it was a dog or something else. Okay, hazards materials, we got one in there?
In there.
Engineering study, did we ever hear from CPC on any of our remember, we asked for some money, for CPC money?
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 that's in there.
The old mill?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mosquito spraying, I don't even know what that is.
Uh, no, it's not.
Okay.
And I'm trying, Ed said that, you know, that wouldn't be dealt with
Okay.
with, by an article.
Okay, so I just
What's that?
Mosquito spraying?
Something about mosquito spraying.
Where is it, which article is it?
No, he's
There isn't one.
Paul's saying, there won't be one. This is one on our list earlier.
Yeah, but I, my question is I mean, I, I, we, we really should be doing something about spraying. I mean, people are getting sick, there's, there's a, a few people in town that have contracted this Lyme disease and everything else.
Yeah, I think
But I guess my question is, should we put an article in there to pass a bylaw that would allow the town to start spraying? Because there may be people in this town that will you know, I mean, that's my question.
Yeah.
Why, Ed'll be back here on the third, why don't we
Yeah.
Why don't we bring it up as a Board of Health?
Yeah, I think what he's, it was, I think what he said was, you know, don't deal with it as an article, put it in as a line item, which hasn't been done yet, so I don't know, I don't know what to I don't know what to throw at it.
We probably should have something in it.
Okay, we'll leave, we'll leave it open then. The zoning bylaw cleanup, deleting the Industrial Development Commission, adding
I don't know
HRA, Hfield Redevelopment Authority, adding DPW to the coordination.
Yeah.
All that. It's just an administrative cleanup.
Right. I don't know where that stands.
Okay, that, that needs to be done.
I don't know if the
DPW needs to be part of the coordination process for this stuff.
Yeah.
There is no Industrial Development Commission. It's just an administrative thing. Expedited permitting, did they close on that, Planning Board?
Pardon me?
Expedited permitting. Accepting Massachusetts General Chapter 43, Section D.
Is that the one? Did we not? Okay, yeah, no. Uh, yeah, well, what, what, what Wilma told me, see, I can't remember everything that was on there.
I think that was
In their hearing, I'm pretty sure it was, but, you know, they supported everything except for the noise bylaw.
Okay, so we think, so that'll be in here.
Yeah.
That's in here somewhere.
Yeah.
Mixed use?
Yeah, that's in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, did, we get the fire chief to clean up his language on burning without a permit?
Well, I talked to him about that and he said, you know, there's no need to change the bylaw from his perspective.
Well, I tapered it over with a motion that
Yeah.
made it work.
Yeah, well, he said that, you know, he said
Pretty general had issue with it.
Yeah. He said he took that, that bylaw and, from the town of Leverett, and essentially didn't change a word other than change Leverett to Hatfield. And he says the enforcement mechanism that he uses is, he threatens people that he's gonna call DEP if they don't cut it out. So
Well, if he can function, then I'm not trying to create something for him.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll drop that one?
Yeah, he said there's no need.
Okay, the HCOG net metering?
That's in there.
Okay. And we've earlier talked about an animal welfare
Oh, that's gone.
We've dropped that.
That's gone.
Is the Town Hall Stabilization?
Yes.
Article in here? Funding compensated balances, we said no. We already got the compensated balance.
Yeah, that was adopted.
But we're, we're not putting any money against it yet. And we're not, we, we're not gonna do any amendment to the capital planning bylaw. The dog license?
That's in there.
Waiver for over 70?
Yeah.
Adoption is Chapter 40, Section 139. How about commercial parking?
Not yet, you know, waiting to see what the Planning Board wants to do.
Okay, well, just
Yeah, I got, I got an email from, from the chairman, which I haven't, I haven't had a chance to read the whole thing, I, so I'm not sure.
Okay, other post-employment benefits?
Yeah, that's there.
That's in here? Exempting personal property under $10,000?
That's not in there yet, I just made a note to myself this morning, I had forgotten to put that in, so that still needs to go in.
The Smith Academy Grant?
Smith Academy Grant? Oh, yeah, 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 the, yeah, for those roof and window project, yeah.
Is that in here?
Yep.
Okay. And, well, the other open issue is on Center School. And we, and that's, but, I mean, just make a placeholder. You know, we've had direction from Town Meeting. Don't sell it.
Right.
We've had direction, don't use it for municipal purposes. Uh, we've got this study group out there and depending on what they come up with, we may need to go back to Town Meeting to
Yep.
request new direction or redirection or
Yeah.
or approve whatever it is we recommend.
Yeah, well, just jumping ahead to Center School, the I gave, this is a, a draft report, but at the back of it is, is the schedule
Uh-huh.
for the consultant, and, yeah, they're looking at a draft report by the middle of May.
Well, so
And a final report, you know, middle of June, and
So that misses Town Meeting.
It misses Town Meeting.
So a whole nother year goes by.
Yeah. And quite frankly, once, once that, once that final report comes in, uh, I think it's gonna take several months of kicking it around before anybody can decide what they want to do, that's my guess. It's gonna, we're gonna get that final report and it's gonna need to, it's gonna need to get digested.
Well, I thought the target was having a recommendation for Town Meeting. That schedule's not gonna fit.
Well, yeah, well, it could, it could, I, I just, you know, particularly given the history of what's going on in this town with that building, I certainly wouldn't rush into anything.
Well, facts aren't gonna change, I mean, they're they're essentially done with the, with the package, aren't they? This is a draft, I understand.
Yeah, no, there's, there's, there's big chunks still missing.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, let's just run through, run through the, the warrant, it's, you know, taking shape, Article 1, 2, 3, they're all set.
Stuff.
Which is all boilerplate, Article 4, boilerplate. Article 5 is the Roof and Window Project article for the school. Article 6, I'm still waiting
You're, you're missing some language here.
Well, this is, this is just the, this is this is just the article, it's not the motion, I didn't
Oh, okay.
put that in there. This is just what's gonna be posted, posted on the wall. Article 6, I'm not, I'm waiting to hear from the accountant whether or not there's gonna be anything to plug in there, probably not, but it's, it's in there. Article 7 is the net metering article. Article 8 is just a blank article, in case I, we need to plug something in there, like commercial parking, for example. Article 9 is the mixed-use development article. Article 10, the medical marijuana bylaw. Article 11
Do we have, we have that somewhere, don't we?
Pardon me?
Where is Have we ever got a final copy of one of them?
I have, I don't have it yet. I don't have it yet.
Okay, I know it
Yeah.
They plagiarized the PBPC in East Hampton.
Yeah, because the, they, the hearing was last Thursday, so yeah, I, I need to get everything that happened at that meeting from Wilma.
Okay.
Yeah. Article 11. They, the Planning Board is not supporting. And, you know, the chairman has asked me, well, you know, what happens, what happens at this point? And I said, well, there could be two things that happen, you know? The Selectmen could decide to bring the noise ordinance, you know, forward as a, as a general town bylaw, which is actually the way it should
Should be.
should be, it shouldn't be in zoning.
Yeah.
I said, the Selectmen could decide to bring that forward on their own, or the, the individual who is, you know, proposing this, you know, could submit a petition and have it put on the, on the warrant, and, and the petition would require 10 signatures of town residents, so Article 11, Article, so I'm, I'm just gonna take this off of here for now unless the, the Board is looking to
Well, leave it on till we resolve.
Okay. Article 12 is the, the waiver for dog licenses for people over 70. Article 13 is the dog licensing fee changes. Article 14, expedited permitting. Article 15 is the 350th anniversary
Is this really I'm just struck that Town Meeting Well, I know we sent this off to Town Council.
Yeah.
So let's make sure he confirms. In fact, the Town, Town Meeting has to approve dog license fees, I cannot believe it.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to anybody, I don't think.
And then, once you have it here, then you gotta go back every time you're gonna change them?
I, yeah.
That's, doesn't make any sense at all.
Doesn't make any sense to me. Article 14, expedited permitting. Article 15, the anniversary article, whether, which we'll see whether we need it or not. Article 17, creating a Town Hall Stabilization Fund.
What happened to 16?
Oh, it
Lost?
Yeah, it's gone. Yeah, these are all gonna end up getting renumbered anyways, chances are. Article 18 is to put money into the Town Hall Stabilization Fund. Article 19, the OPEB Trust Fund.
What are you gonna spell that out for the
Article 20. To, to vote and transfer money from the Town Hall Garage Account to for furnishings for the Town Hall. Now, we've also talking about putting some of that money into the stabilization.
Yes.
So that, that's still kinda up in the air, what we're gonna do there. Article, yeah, we're just, Article 23.
Well, let, let's talk about that.
Yeah.
How much, how much do we expect roughly?
I'd say about 40,000.
From that?
Yeah, about 40,000.
Have we defined the requirement for Furnishings? upgrades here?
No. No.
Well, we need
I don't think, I I don't really think we need that much. Quite frankly. But I, you know, I've been planning on
Well
surveying the But I, you know, I've been planning on, you know, surveying the departments and
Okay.
See what our needs are.
Let's see what the, see what it is until it comes out.
Article twenty-three is for water meter upgrades. Okay, yeah, I haven't talked to Phil about this, but I'm, article twenty-four, I'm assuming that we're gonna be doing another lease for vehicles.
But is it next year or sixteen?
Sixteen.
I, I believe it's.
It's every other?
Well, you confirm it. You're the expert.
This is the last. Fifteen will be the last payment on the original lease.
Okay.
So it'll be
Sixteen.
Sixteen will be re-leasing.
We'll, we'll go for another lease in sixteen.
Well, you confirmed that for him, but I think it's sixteen.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, article twenty-five is the hazardous materials wasted and recovery bylaw.
Can I ask a question? This is style. Why do we state the bylaw here and not the other ones? I mean.
Well, this is the only one that I actually have the language for.
Okay.
And I figure that, you know, if it's a short, if it's a short bylaw like this one is, it's, it, you know, I will typically put it right in the in the warrant, you know, if it's some lengthy thing, then, you know, have it as an attachment.
Or available in the
Yeah.
Town clerk's office.
Available in the town clerk's office, right? And then the next bunch of articles are CPA articles. The first two are the, you know, the, the annual boilerplate.
Putting their money into various accounts.
Yeah, going on to page seven, there's seventy-four thousand dollars for a three-year project to inventory, the head field.
I thought that was, oh, okay. I didn't realize it was that.
Still a lot more work to do. So this is seventy-four thousand dollars over three years for inventory management and other collection. And then the next article is the five thousand dollars for a feasibility study for the Prospect Court Bridge. The next article is forty-seven thousand dollars for, to replace windows at the Capital Wonk Housing Project. And then the next article is forty-five thousand dollars to purchase two parcels up in the watershed area, just up Mountain Road. And then article thirty-three is the revowing funds. I haven't updated those numbers. I don't know if they need to, yet. I have to look into that.
Thank you. You got.
And then article thirty-four and thirty-five is just boilerplate.
You got a bunch of edits there. You got fiscal year thirteen or July thirteen, fiscal year fourteen and. Okay, where?
The only, the only thing that I know is missing at this point is the personal property.
Okay, where is water transmission line? Where, where are the capital things? Water transmission line, the?
I'm unaware of any capital things.
Okay. All right, that's right. We're just, cut it short. We won't, we won't ask for the four hundred thousand. Go ahead.
Yeah, we, I mean, we.
What about North Street? Sewer? Well, it's approved, the board of selectmen approved a series of capital projects for.
Okay.
So they need to be, the ones that are not grants or CPA. Like with the purchase of two parcels in the watershed, that was CPA plus there's a Kestrel grant.
Okay.
Taking care of that.
Right.
Okay, that's fine. Sidewalks on Main, Chestnut and North Street.
We had.
We had some of that. We had, we don't put it into chapter ninety, but water meters, water service, sewer maintenance, water sewer enterprise. I think you had some of that in here. Replace second and North Street sewer. That was by borrowing. The West Street is by grant. Energy improvements of the garage by grant. Transmission line. Okay, well. I get, we've decided, I guess, we're not gonna go capital planning recommended board decided not to go forward. We're, we'll truncate the project. If and come back and include that as part of phase two.
So if, if we're unsuccessful in getting money from some other source, we're just gonna go under the road and that's as far as we'll go for now.
That's, yeah, well. Well, we'll get underneath, over by, what's it, Brockway? Stop there.
Yeah, you won't be crossing the Mill River Cross.
No. Maybe we oughta revisit that. Just as a kind of a back burner, depending how, the degree to which the school comes in.
I mean, I can certainly add an article. We can always take it out if needs be.
Why don't you put it, pull it out there, put it out there and then we can still kinda, when we get a whole, the whole picture.
You can decide then.
Decide then. Well, I'm, I'm on the one hand, this might strengthen our position for the bond bill, but. Anyway, we could
Okay.
Have it there and we'll it's a big tentative, depending on how other things work out. All right, schedule with finance committee. What, when are we meeting with them?
Well, yeah.
What's all that? What's next steps?
Yeah, I'm, I'm meeting with the, I'll call it the subcommittee. We're trying to set up a meeting for next week. And we're, we'll talk then. You know, about what their schedule looks like and, you know, I'm thinking we can, you know, set up another meeting during the day within the next few weeks.
Okay, when are we?
And Louise and I are working on the whole budget sheet. So that's starting to come together. And I'm, I'm hoping that in another week or so, things will begin to start crystallizing.
Okay, well, what's?
We're saying, you know, there's still.
I don't, I forgot to bring our
But I, I should say it, it doesn't.
Where are we on our master schedule for budget activities and town meeting?
Oh, I don't know.
Well, I know we're behind on the town report getting to Wilma by the first of March.
Yeah, that, that, I'll have something to her by the first of March easily.
I believe we're closed, should be closed on articles for town meeting on the warrant, except for petition.
Yeah, I, I've, you know, received nothing from anybody, you know? What was I gonna say? Oh, I wanted to say, you know, yeah, we're, we're, I think things will start to crystallize here in terms of the budget picture within the next couple of weeks. But it doesn't look like we're in any kind of trouble. I think, I think we're fairly well under the levy limit. Even with the requested budgets. But, you know, we'll, we'll see. But it doesn't, it doesn't look like there's, you know, any, any big crunch that we're facing.
Okay, good. The only good news I've heard about budgets. Budgets are emotional among other things. Thank you. All right, so you're gonna get back to us on dates to meet with the finance committee so we can start locking things down?
Yeah.
We don't have any other word. So our planning assumptions are essentially are we using the governor's numbers?
Yes.
For working purposes?
Lack of anything else, but, you know, the, the word that I'm hearing is that, you know, the House is likely to bump, bump up the state aid numbers. Yeah, I thought the, I thought, you know, the you know, the state revenue picture has been, you know, pretty rosy. So I was expecting the governor to, when he put out his budget to you know, kinda reflect that in the state aid, but it, it didn't.
Yeah, but he, he built his budget around a hunk of taking out of the rainy day fund, so.
So.
Not quite as rosy as some would like to paint.
Yeah, yeah. But I've heard from the, you know, the House leadership that they're likely to, you know, increase the state aid. So we'll see.
Okay. Center school study, I think we covered that.
Yeah, pretty much. The only thing I would like to add.
Is there anything we can do to help?
Well.
Facilitate and bring it to closure ahead of and in time for any action by town meeting? Cause otherwise, we're, it's either a special town meeting, which costs.
Yeah. Well, um.
For another whole year.
Yeah, well, I know, and that's a long, that's a long ways away. Well, we are looking at having a joint meeting with the study committee and the consultants on March twenty-fifth. Which is a regularly scheduled selectmen's meeting.
Okay.
So we can certainly talk about that then. Cause if, you know, you know, we might, we might, you know, it's moving along at a certain pace now. You know, we might be able to pick up the pace, you know, just by a few weeks and you know, that would bring it in line with having something ready for town meeting, though I still think that's dangerous.
Well, it wouldn't be a dollar issue particularly. It would be essentially a policy issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Wouldn't, wouldn't impact the budget.
No, I guess I'm just, I'm concerned that, you know, I think there's an awful I think there, there will need to be, uh I don't, I don't wanna call on Ed. I think that we would probably need several informational sessions.
Yeah. Ahead of town meeting?
Ahead of town meeting, yeah, which might be difficult to do. I mean, you know, I think from what I've, you know, I've been hearing all kinds of stories about, you know, various attempts to do something with the building and it seems a lot, a lot of the decisions have been made on erroneous assumptions, erroneous information, like people thinking their building's worth a lot of money and it's it's worth nothing. It's, it's worth minus three point seven million dollars because that's how much it would cost to bring it basically up to code. So that's my fear, is bringing something before town meeting, before all the information is out there and people know about it. Otherwise, you know, we're likely to be back at square one again.
All right, well.
So anyways.
Let's put as a goal, having something for town meeting. If we can't, if it doesn't make sense, we can't get there
Yeah.
during the whole month of April with some informational sessions. Here, I mean, it's just a matter, here are the options and
Yeah.
Pick one and
Yeah.
Run with it. Energy grant.
Energy grant, yeah. The only thing I wanna I still have not heard from D O, D O E R and I'm gonna, I'm gonna call this week, cause this is ridiculous.
I called Jim Barry. Jim Barry's the one that approached me at the MMA conference and said, hey, oh, by the way, don't forget I won, just for the record. He was very complimentary of Paul's report, annual report. And, and he wanted to remind us next round of grant submissions are early part of March and encouraged us to get them in, so.
Yeah. So the next round of energy grants are due March twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
The maximum amount that you can request is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We'll take it.
So, and so I've been having discussions with our energy consultant who helped me put the the amended five-year plan together about, you know, what projects we should go for. The, there's a couple, one thing I noticed in the criteria for this year is that they're not gonna be funding any interior lighting projects, so we had a fairly big one for the elementary school to replace all the interior lights with LED, so that one's, that one's not gonna fly this year. But we've probably got it, you know, a good two hundred thousand dollars worth of projects that we can apply for, so. I'll be working with the consultant on that and with Jim Barry. So that's kinda where we're at with that.
Great. Well, let's, let's not miss that.
So March is gonna be an extremely busy month.
Yes.
It'll be the budget and grants.
What projects are you looking at as far as the?
Well, number one on the list is, is the sewer plant. That's, and that's, that's, that's like a hundred thousand dollar project. The sewer plant. Weather, weatherizing the DPW building.
I see that.
Yeah.
I, I, I still say somebody oughta check up here too. I mean, if you look at the icicles along the side of that building, it tells you you're losing.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I've heard, yeah, there's plenty of, I've, I've been up there. And that was back when this was the auditorium and we had the little square lights up there. The lights weren't even on and I could see daylight coming up through the lights.
Oh, no kidding?
I mean, there's insulation up there.
Yeah.
But I don't know if it's adequate, put it that way.
Probably not. Probably not. Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna get back with the center school group soon. Fire and ambulance. Still interested in their proposal, how they plan to integrate. You're gonna have some initial discussion with finance committee, but we need to re-engage with them on on issues and try and bring all this to closure soon.
Yeah.
And you're gonna round up materials in advance of Friday?
Yes.
It's in there.
I have a session with Michael.
I think there's some ambulance abatements that need to be dealt with.
I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve ambulance abatement for the month of January in the amount of one thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, is there anything, anything else in here that we need to act on? Oh. That's signed, yeah. Anything else, Paul? Key, did you have any?
Just a couple. We've had some computer upgrades and the board of selectmen were asking to declare the old computers surplus so we can dispose of them through period.
Can we have one for the board of selectmen?
I don't see why not.
Are, are, are they functional?
Oh, so, well.
Do they work?
Yeah.
We don't.
What about the computer that's in there now? Would, would, do we just leave that in there? Or, cause I know, who else uses that computer? I know.
Well, we're just talking about an off tell.
Yeah.
For anyone that, Paul Dostal use it, I use it. I don't know who else does, if anyone.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I mean, we, we could just. I mean, um, we could just move that desk and that computer into that room, you know?
Well, if we have, if we have another one, can we put a second computer in there?
I don't see why not.
Or instead of trashing it?
You will have extra computers coming up once the fire and police upgrade out back because I know they're ordering theirs correct, so.
Yeah, no, I.
They're like the younger kids in the, get the hand-me-downs.
Yeah, now, what about Tony's computer? I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like that one's pretty old and probably no one would even really want it.
Well, there's two of them at the DPW that have to be declared.
Okay, two, two DPW computers, yeah, yeah, that.
Well, let me, let me put it this way. It would be helpful if we, if we're going to use that for some period of time, that little small office as, as an off-tell, not just for the board of selectmen, but.
For anybody.
But for other, Paul comes in, DSO, a place for him to sit down and talk to people as well.
Yeah, actually, I saw.
A couple of computers would be very helpful.
I saw Bob Wagner in there yesterday. He pulled a chair from somewhere and he was doing something, you know, on top of one of the filing cabinets, so, you know?
So, it, there is no place.
There is no place, you're right.
For a lot of these folks that are on various committees because they don't have any office or anything. It's not that they don't need telephones or any, anything like that, but a computer and a printer and copying machines across the hall.
Yep, we'll get it set up.
All right.
Right, Phil?
All right, well, do we need a listing of what you want us to declare as excess?
There's just two DPW computers right now.
Oh, is that, is that all?
That's it for now.
For now, yeah.
There'll be more coming.
There's more coming, yeah.
Well, do you want to do it all as a package or do you want to do?
Well, he said he'll take the computers, so let's just get rid of them instead of stockpiling them somewhere.
Motion to approve two DPW computers, access to the needs of the town.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, now.
We've got a bunch of others left, too.
But there's some bylaw that says we have to post our stuff on the bulletin board if you're going to try and sell it.
Well, this won't be sold, Perigis is going to take it and recycle it.
Oh, this is junk? All right, all right, okay.
But they needed a motion from the board to declare it that it's no longer any good to the town. But they will take it and recycle it.
Okay.
And instead of stockpiling like we had on the stage that time.
Let's just, when, when we're done with them, let's get rid of them.
That's right.
You still got stuff back here, too. I mean, it's some desks and file cabinets. Do we have a plan for them or you might want to think about at some point in time getting rid of that and auctioning it off?
Yeah, yeah, there's a pretty nice table back there, an old wooden table that was in my office. I've got another table in there that I want to fix up now, but then there's, there's a bunch of, you know, kind of cheap tables and, uh.
Why don't you put that one table for the board of selectmen, let us use it in the off-tell?
Yeah, well, we can move that whole workstation in there.
I know.
Yeah, and, and a table, yeah.
Table to sit around, talk.
Yeah. Okay.
Create a little office area, excess items, no cost.
Yeah, but, uh, yeah, there's a lot of tables back here that, yeah, I don't, not sure if the town clerk needs them for elections or what, you know, I'm going to have to talk to her about that.
Well, I guess the point is.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of junky tables back there.
All right. Any other business? Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you all very much. Thank you, John.